I have called the February 4th council meeting to order. Please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for invitation by a pastor to the first line.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amen.
Shall we pray? Lord Jesus, we thank you for this evening and allowing us to gather together. I pray, Lord, that your spirit will be with us in all of our conversations. What I pray, you'll lead us into a conversation and meeting of peace. And I pray that you'll give us truth. I pray you'll give us discernment. And, Lord, in your name, I want to rebuke Satan away from causing confusion and we pray, Lord, there'll be great clarity tonight and liberty. And, Lord, this council meeting tonight will advance forward the causes of this city and the people of this city. So I pray your blessing upon everyone who's gathered here tonight in your precious name. Amen.
Amen.
[inaudible] McKeever.
Here.
Myers.
Here.
Me. Here. Pika.
Here.
Gilkin.
Here.
Bo.
Here.
All set.
Here.
Need a motion to accept the minutes from the January 21st, 2020 meeting?
So, in a second.
All those in favor, if you're out.
Aye.
All opposed? This is the time that we grant permission for listeners to speak. If anybody wants to address council, please come up to the podium, clearly state your name and address, and address council.
I live at 411 Plymouth Street, DeSires, Ohio. June 27, 2005, Castle Rod versus Gonzalez. The US Supreme Court ruled yet again that police and law enforcement do not have constitutional duty to protect any person from harm. No duty to protect you. February 14, 2018, 17 people killed in Parkland at Somendavis High School. School resource officer Scott Peterson refused to enter the building. Counsel zero duty to protect you. That being said, I have all faith in our local law enforcement that they would not act as Scott Peterson did. I know many of the men in this area, a lot of veterans, quite a few Marines on police force in DeSires. I know what Marines are about. So who does? Who does have the responsibility to protect you? You do. There are people amongst us who are calling for gun restrictions based on mental health. It's a valid point. Eighty-one percent of female rape victims suffer from PTSD. We gonna disarm them? We gonna make them victims again? Fifty percent of new mothers suffer from baby blues. Up to fifteen percent develop postpartum depression. We gonna disarm those people? Type 2 diabetics can fall into sudden rage and have a higher risk of depression based on their insulin levels. Are we gonna disarm those people? That's a slippery slope the red flag law legislation has. And I understand it's been tabled and sent back to committee. Here's the fear that we have because it's happened before with politicians. We're gonna get past the primaries, they're gonna pull it back out of committee, they're gonna reinsert the red flag legislation, and they're gonna force it down our throats just like they did Obamacare, 'cause you gotta pass it before you can read it. Counties that have passed sanctuary status resolutions for the Second Amendment include Clinton, Pike, Lawrence, which is where I was born, Tremble, Claremont, Benton, Jackson, Galia, Megs, Scioto, and just recently, Hocking. Morrell County will announce tomorrow. Marion will follow soon. Contrary to popular belief, the people in those areas are not uneducated, illiterate rednecks. We're patriots. Many, many men and women have sacrificed from those areas for this country with an oath to the Constitution. Cincinnati became a sanctuary city, self-declared in 2017. Columbus stated essentially immigration enforcement is not the responsibility to enforce. Donald Trump's Justice Department tried to withhold funding to illegal immigrant sanctuary cities in July 2017. They tried to make law enforcement grants contingent on local officials cooperating with ICE agents. Federal state judges ruled that was unconstitutional. It would be fair to assume that the city of DeSires could refuse to enforce any new unconstitutional gun legislation that could prohibit gun ownership, all while maintaining current funding levels. However, it's not what we're asking. We're not asking you not to enforce the laws. What we're asking is for our local elected officials to send a symbolic message to the state of Ohio that a majority of its voters and residents do not approve of any new gun legislation that would prohibit gun ownership. This needs to go to the floor committee. As the county seat, we must leave the way. Your legacy is on the line. Your political future is at stake here. As of now, your legacy can be described as infringement on the First Amendment, as we saw in August during the Rappers Festival, based on a man's sexual orientation. That's uncalled for. We're on the verge of being able to say you'd also infringe on the Second Amendment. In my possession, I have about 600 signatures. I got about 150 of them right downstairs in your lobby. I got over 100 in Galia last Saturday as I stood out in the cold for four hours. And then I got another 150 at the fairgrounds at a gun raffle. The majority of the people in this community believe in the Second Amendment and do not want any more gun regulation from the state of Ohio. And we expect you to represent us in that manner to the state. Thank you.
Mr. Taylor.
Yes, ma'am.
You're from Lawrence County.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm from Jackson County. Nice to meet you.
Thank you, Taylor.
We're all from the hills.
Yes, ma'am.
My name is Margaret Thorne. I live at 420 Mater Drive. I'm a retired teacher and a director of a volunteer nonprofit dedicated to getting more kids in this area to some type of further education. And I'm an old lady who has lived, not for a long time in Jackson County, but an old lady who has lived in DeSires for nearly 50 years. As a side note, my husband and I are registered Republicans. I'm extremely proud of our local police force and our criminal justice system that has made this a town where I feel I can grow old safely. I do not want to do anything that would make our officers or our judges' jobs more difficult. And I think the sanctuary city proposal would do that. Saying that we are a Second Amendment sanctuary city and will not follow the laws of the state at the state or federal level will put our officers in a tough spot. Secondly, I don't think such protection for gun ownership is necessary at this time. I do not believe a state like Ohio, which has died in the war, Republican state, will ever pass legislation that will significantly limit gun ownership. Governor Dewine, after the Dayton shootings, proposed a red flag law. By October, he backed away from that. We have no need to be declared a gun sanctuary city at this point. We need to approach this issue with common sense, not legislation. Finally, becoming a gun sanctuary city puts a label on us that I think most of us don't really want. A label that might attract dangerous people or mentally ill folks, whom, while they might not be able to have all their gun rights in other parts of the state, will be attracted to our community, whether that's safe for the rest of us or not. I don't want a Zillow real estate ad that says, "Come to DeSires, the gun sanctuary city of north central Ohio." I want DeSires to be known for good schools, for low crime rate, for the arts, for excellent social services, and of course, for Broadmirst. I urge city council to set this legislation, this proposal aside, for this community becoming a gun sanctuary city will do more harm. Thank you very much.
I'm the founder of the Positive Seekers. How many council members own a gun? How do you feel about your gun rights being regulated?
Don't answer. It's not, you're not under inquisition.
She's speaking right now.
Yeah, well, I want you to take the turn. You want to shut off the vote.
Or what has she done?
Take, what are your turn, Bob?
Does anybody want to answer?
The public comment time is not a debate back and forth between the council members and the citizen wanting to make a public comment, so you're more than free to continue on with your public.
I just wondered to know if anybody would want to say what they felt about the regulation on them. In other words, we don't hear much from council on what they like and what they don't like. How many of you guys saying you're new, how many own the gun on council?
I don't know.
Right, so what do they think about the so-called regulation of the patents? You still want to keep your guns, right? Just a question.
I'm driving 169 Shell Avenue. I'm here to have a few words about the Second Amendment sanctuary city. You all know this is only symbolic, right? It means absolutely nothing. It will accomplish nothing. Or will it? Will it put a black eye on our community for potential businesses wanting to locate here, or possibly grants being awarded for updates and improvements for our town being given to somebody else? Is that what we want? I hope not, but I don't know if that'll happen or not either. I don't think any of us know that. There's no statistics, there's no data, there's nothing being presented to me to say that designating us as a sanctuary city, a Second Amendment sanctuary city, is going to do our community any good at all. And I feel that that needs to be considered. You need to bring me some data, you need to bring me some proof, you need to bring me some facts, that this is going to be better for all the citizens of this community, not just a handful of you that want. I, for one, feel that, also feel that this is a waste of our taxpayers' money, including mine. I am a taxpayer, lived in this city my whole entire life. This issue's taken way too much of these council members' time, our elected officials' time. They need to be spending their time on more important issues of this community, such as our drug problem, creating new businesses and good paying jobs for our community, upkeep of our parks and roads, and just overall trying to make this a desirable small town that people want to raise their families and grow old in. I'd much rather see our elected officials and county members solve the problems of our town instead of dealing with meaningless issues. Thank you for listening.
Okay, my name is Gary Miller. I'm Roger Street. I had a little thing to say, but I actually had a citizen that asked if I could read your statement. Is that allowed? Do you need her name, ma'am?
You can read it.
Okay. Mr. President, members of council, I am sorry of prior commitments prevent me from appearing in tonight's city council meeting, however, I do want to make sure my voice is heard. A non-binding resolution asking DeSires to be a Second Amendment sanctuary is not a good idea, as it would endanger public safety. And the proponents of said resolution aren't telling the whole truth. This week is National Gun Violence Survivors Week. According to the CDC, every year more than 36,000 people die from gun violence. Nearly 77,000 people survive gun injuries. Nearly 1,500 children and teens die from gun violence. More than 6,000 children and teens survive gun injuries. Higher rates are close to the national average in deaths from gun violence, 4.6 deaths per 100,000 people. And according to research done by the Harvard School of Public Health, a broad array of evidence indicates that gun availability is a risk factor for homicide in the United States. Yet, the special interest group, Ohio Saints United, has been invited into our community to tell us what is good for the community, and its safety, and distract us from issues the city really needs to work on. This advocacy group is not just content to waste our city council's time, but wants to employ them for their agenda to use non-binding resolutions passed all over the state to send a message to the state house and encourage deregulating guns and more lax gun laws. Just as one penny does invite much 100 of them to make a dollar. It's not pro-gun, it's anti-regulation. The waste of time and energy apparently is related to red flag gun laws, yet Governor Dewine removed them from his strong Ohio bill proposal. The pink slip law, which replaced the red flag law, is enhancing a process that is already in place. Further, even a Fox News poll of registered voters from August of 2019 found 90% responded as favor universal background checks, 81% supported taking guns from at-risk individuals, and 67% favored banning assault-style weapons. I cite these specific references because I've been accused of inciting panic and giving false information on social media regarding guns and gun violence. And I specifically use the Fox News poll because it is extremely recent and responds for being politically right-leaning because the news organization is politically right-leaning. So in summary, an outsider extremist group wants to make our city less safe, divide and distract our city, is a political ploy for a law that has already been watered down while we struggle to maintain our infrastructure. This does not sound like a good idea for our city. Being a sanctuary city isn't about pro-gun, it's about anti-regulation. Getting rid of background checks means more bad guy, more bad guys get guns. Allowing assault-style weapons of high capacity magazines means higher body counts in match shootings. And it also means law enforcement, who swore an oath to uphold justice and the Constitution, are encouraged to not enforce gun laws. Thank you for taking the time to hear my concerns and the rationale for them. I think it's important to have civil dialogue, civil dialogue, regarding heavy decisions concerning our city, and that civil dialogue should include facts, not just opinions. I look forward to the city council being passed this issue and getting towards the issues that really matter, specifically roads, water, and jobs. Thank you.
Are you sure you didn't like this? Pretty good, though.
Why is it challenging? How does it challenge it?
What's that? No, Amanda Moe, for me.
I'm Brandon Layton from 1526 Fairview Avenue, and I wrote an email to the council that I'd like to read here to show that I'm not just a keep-away warrior. As a resident of DeSires, Ohio, and the United States, I have inherited the sacred right of self-government through the election of representatives and governors, and that would include the mayor and everyone else. This government has no power outside the consent of the governed. The primary duty of any elected official is to protect the sacred, innate, and unalienable rights endowed by our Creator. These rights are not given by any legislative body, and they are not given by the governors. They're given by the Creator. Affirming our Second Amendment rights by declaring DeSires a free city from state infringement is your fundamental obligation as a public servant entrusted with the preservation of those rights. This is not new laws. We're not asking you to defy laws, we're asking you to uphold the laws that we were given 200 years ago. This is more important than any budgetary or public work pertaining to local governance. If we say it'll cost business, costing business is a, that's not, it's not about costing business. This is about our innate rights coming from our Creator and not from government. I trust that the city council and the mayor will defend our rights of due process, because that's what this is about, due process, not whether or not we can own a gun. Freedom from unlawful seizure and liberty to bear arms by formal revolution, I understand it's non-binding, it's a formal revolution, to say that we can arm ourselves as free people, so that the state and the federal government know that DeSires is free. Now, the reason why I'm here dressed like this instead of a bit more appropriate is because I got an email response to this right as I was getting out of the gym, and motivated me to make sure I showed up. The response is, and I'll read it, and I don't mind, I'm not gonna say who it was, but I received it from the council, and it says, "Thank you for sharing your opinion on this hot-button topic in times like this when there is a divide between sides of argument. I feel it is best to sit back and listen. At the same time, I am reading and learning as much as I can about the matter. I am carefully examining the economic impact such a decision could and would have on our community as well. Regardless of which side of the debate you find yourself on, I want to thank you for taking time to contact me and weigh in on something that matters to you." And first off, I want to thank you for the response, 'cause I wasn't expecting one. So I appreciate that, but what I would like to reiterate is that there are two sides of the issue, but the two sides of that issue was settled 250 years ago in a war, that these rights are given by God and not government. So it's not up to someone else to decide whether or not we have the right to due process. It's not up to someone whether or not someone has the right to come and seize our things and then sort of act it back. This is given by God. So again, I appreciate you for the response, but right now, as stands, the law is clear. These rights are given. So if, as elected officials, your job is to uphold the law, then there isn't a decision to make. It's already been made. We have the Bill of Rights. DeSires is already a sanctuary city. Already, by default. And this Rajivusten just reminds the state of that. Thank you.
My name is Brady Lupton at 322 West Irving Street. I did not come here today with any other intention other than to sign a petition, but after hearing some of the remarks, I felt like I needed to make one as well. I believe in gun laws, to an extent. I absolutely believe gun laws are here to protect our community, our citizens, everyone in the world. However, the red flag gun laws are not. At what point does due process make it to where, so I could walk up and say, "He robbed my home, he's arrested and guilty until he can prove innocent"? That is the long road we are going down. Along with, when these laws are instituted across our states, it will not fall on the state governments to foot the bill for pushing these laws and getting them, getting all the guns taken care of, the gun buyback programs. That will fall on local government. That's when it will become this council's problem. I understand that this is not any, becoming a Second Amendment sanctuary city would not be law by you. Obviously, the governor and the state have that power, but we need to send a message that due process, that our laws, our court situations, and how we handle guilty versus innocent cannot and is not able to be altered. We will never be able to stand as a nation where you are guilty until proven innocent. That is my biggest issue with the red flag laws. I, for one, do not believe that taking away our gun rights would make anyone safer. But they thought that in Australia, and they have shown, statistics after statistics, that it did not, because only the law-abiding citizens turned in their guns. Now, everyone is a victim, even law enforcement officers. They cannot stop the crime rates in certain cities over there. As far as our loss of businesses, yes, that is a major concern that we need to be adjusted with, and we need to be concerned with. However, no matter which side you go on, if somebody believes firmly enough, you will lose businesses, whether it's because they support the Second Amendment or it's because they don't. And that is something that I'll also consider. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
I live at 729 DeSires. I attended the first meeting and I listened, and there was an equivalent between immigration sanctuary cities and the Second Amendment sanctuary cities. So I did a little research, and there's a difference between those. The immigration codes are part of a federal law, and local jurisdictions have the right to decide that they're not going to use tax money for federal laws. They can't stop the federal government from enforcing those laws, but the federal government can't force local jurisdictions. So becoming a sanctuary city for immigration is, can be legal and binding. They just can't get in the way of the federal government. But the Second Amendment sanctuary cities, these laws are state criminal laws, and so they have to be, whatever laws the state passes has to be enforced by the local entities. They can't ignore the laws. So I just don't see the point in stating these things now. I can tell you that people that don't like the state laws, there are democratic mechanisms to change this, now this doesn't have anything to do with the cities, but there was a gerrymandering, and it was a citizens' initiative, where there were thousands and thousands of people signing petitions to get it to be a state law, and then the state legislature decided to take it up. So I think that if you really believe in something, that go about it with the democratic process and, you know, not just things that don't mean anything. So I think there's alternatives to the people that really believe this, but I don't think it is having a city or a county pass some amendment that means nothing. Thank you.
My name is Amy Coplay. I live at 1111 South Walnut Street. I wrote notes 'cause I'm a squirrel, so bear with me. So I grew up around guns, not as sport, not as fun, but purely self-protection. And I raised my son the same way. I don't know if everybody here remembers, I didn't always live on South Walnut Street, two minutes away from DeSires Police Department, but I used to live out in Rolla-Crawford County, way out in Rolla-Crawford County, actually the last road before it goes to another county. So a few years back... So a few years back, in rural Crawford County, people were knocking on doors during the daytime. If nobody answered, they were breaking into their homes. I don't know if anybody ever... So my son got off the bus, let himself in the house. He was a twelve-and-a-half responsible kid. And he called me as I was just on Crestline Road heading home, and he said, "Mom, somebody's banging on the door really hard," and I could hear it in the background, and I'm sorry because it still is very vivid in my mind. He said, "What do I do?" So I said, "Okay, where are you at in the house?" And he said, "I'm in my room." I said, "I want you to go across the hallway to my room, lock the bedroom door, crouch down as little as you can between my bed and the wall, and the 38th is loaded, the safety is on, and I want you to protect yourself. If anybody comes to that door, you know what to do." This was a few years ago in Crawford County, right? So I told him to silence his phone. I was calling 911, and I'd call him right back. So I called the dispatcher. I gave her my address, told her that somebody was possibly breaking into my home, my child was home alone. She told me that both the deputies that were on call were tied up, but she was getting one in route. So I said, "About how long?" She said, "About 20 minutes to your address." I don't know what could have happened to my son in 20 minutes, if that was a murder, that was a pedophile, but I know I made it from that point on Crestline Road. As I told her, I'm flying on my way home in a safe manner, and will be entering my home and have a loaded weapon in my hand within two seconds of entering my door, and I would be ensuring that myself and my child are both safe before the sheriff gets there. So long story short, got there, cleared the house, made it to my son. We were standing in the driveway for nine minutes as the sheriff came flying in lights and sirens. It's not just Crawford County that's just Ucires, Ohio. It's not just the city. There's folks that live far away from anybody that can protect them. So I think about, when I read some of the bill wording, and I'm not a highly educated person, I'm not a Marine, I'm not anybody. When I read about this stuff, I think about what was personally happening in my life at that time, and I'd just gone through a nasty divorce. And to think about this bill and how my ex-husband could have tweaked this to where I couldn't have protected my child that day is very scary to me, and it should concern every single person sitting in this room. Whether you believe in guns, don't believe in guns, shouldn't matter. Fact is, is if that bill had passed four years ago, I have no doubt in my mind that my ex-husband would have looked at that judge in the courtroom and said, "I think she's You should probably take your guns away." And that day, I would have had two options to protect my son. I could have stood in the driveway for about 11 minutes. I figure it probably took me two minutes to clear the house and get my son back out to the driveway, which was not gonna happen. Or I could have entered my home with no real way to protect myself or my child. So as a sheriff who's been to every one of my kids' football games, basketball games, I see them around town, I said, "Hey, guy, new house. How fast would you have been here if I would have had a security system?" And he looked at me and he said, "Amy, I got here as fast as I possibly could have. I couldn't have got here any faster. If a bomb went off in your house, I couldn't have got here any faster." I said, "Okay." So my point is, is whether you choose a home security system, cameras, a big dog, or a gun beside your bed, I don't think it's up to anybody individually in this room to decide if that's okay or not. I think Crawford County should leave it up to each person individually to decide what makes them feel safe and secure. I'm gonna ask Council, everybody sitting here that makes the decisions, to give every resident in Crawford County the okay to decide how they feel safe and secure. Because we might just be a little county, but you know what? In the big picture, on the big block of the state of Ohio, you know, we're just a little square, right? But if all the squares come together, then the governor doesn't have a choice, right? But if we don't do our little part, then it's useless. And I'm not political. I'm sorry. I'm just not. I'm just telling you how I feel. If everyone doesn't stand behind this, whether you agree or not, we're potentially taking away someone's right to choose how they are safe, and I personally don't think that's right. Y'all should stand behind each resident, residents' rights to decide. You should stand up for the ones who decide that a gun beside the bed is what makes me feel safe and secure. The same way I would stand beside somebody that said a home security system makes them feel safe and secure. Something is happening in Virginia right now, and I don't follow things very well, but I do know this. I'm sure no little county or mayor or council would have thought that that would ever happen. And it's taking away many Americans' safety and security, and whether you agree with it or not is irrelevant to those who are now concerned about their family's safety. So I'm just asking, I mean, it's already here, right? We're already a sentient city, so I'm just asking the Council to be like, "Hey, you know what? We're just gonna continue with it. We're gonna make our little square across the county a part of the big equation that's already here." So that's all I have.
Jim Price, 1019 Ridge Street. I don't believe this is so much a gun issue. I think it's more of an issue to tell our government down at the State House that we're sick of legislation. Don't create a bill to make a name for yourself. Things have been the way they are for years. We wanna blame it on guns. This cell phone in my pocket has killed more children than guns ever have this year. More people die of distracted driving than are here with guns. How many people have been riding down the road and somebody pulls out a McDonald's and eating their french fries in front of them? Yet, we're not at McDonald's saying, "Hey, you can't do that," because guns are an easy target. Guns create votes. And unfortunately, I think that's more what this is about. If we stand behind it, it lets the government know that, hey, don't make a name for yourself by passing these dumb laws. Work for us, the people. And, you know, that's pretty much all I have to say on this. And...
Okay. You moving?
My name is Mandy Lewis. I live here in Ucires.
What was your address in Ucires?
Smallwood Avenue. But I have absolutely no problem with people owning guns. I do believe there should be more mental health checks, because unlike a lot of people, I can go get a concealed carry. I can own as many guns as I want. I don't think I should. But people don't think that way in that process who have mental issues. So it's not about being... If we become a sanctuary city like you, when you had that automatic weapon on your transparency for Crawford County, that didn't send out a good... It didn't look good. I could be just as good with one shot as some people could be with 50. There has to be a limit to what we allow, because not all people will acknowledge that they shouldn't own a gun. And if they get it, you never know what will happen.
I'd like to start out by saying I don't want to be...
Can you state your name and address, please?
Douglas Stamper, 400 West Mansfield Street. I don't want to be here. I am an uneducated redneck, and I prefer to be doing uneducated rednecks. I don't want to be. I've been waiting for a long time that can surely, somebody way smarter than me would stand up and take care of these issues. But they haven't, so reluctantly, you're right. I'm very concerned. I've been watching and listening to what's happening in our nation, our state, our county, and our city, more and more in the last 10 years or so. I think it's gotten to a point where anyone that likes this great nation, likes freedom and likes the ability to speak their mind and enjoy free speech, should be concerned. The First Amendment is, in essence, what America is. You don't get that without the Second Amendment. Let me repeat that. The First Amendment is basically what the idea of America is, and you don't get that without the Second. Now, it's as simple as I can break it down for the anti-gun people, that I can explain it in a way that might hit through. We had a guy here at the last meeting, Mike Schiffer, I think his name is, running for County Commissioner. He's a good public speaker, voiceless guy. He said he was a Republican, he was a lifelong NRA member, so my ears perked up. Then he went on to say some things I did not like. He said, "We do not need to be a Second Amendment sanctuary city at this time." He said, "We do not need that kind of heat." What heat? What is everybody afraid of? Is, like New Jersey, a knee breaker is gonna come to town? I don't understand. He also said that we offer a CCW for us here in town, but we've changed the name of it to a firearms safety training course because of the way people are about guns right now. You toned it down to appease who? Who are we not trying to offend? I don't understand. Why, I mean, why is... Now is not the time to cower down, to try to appease people. These extremists have just pushed long enough. I'm asking you, Council, what are you gonna do? Are you gonna cower and whisper? Are you gonna stand up and be counted? I would urge you all to vote this county a Second Amendment sanctuary county ASAP. Not to be politicians, not to drag your feet, put this on a ballot. It's a no-brainer. Vote yes for America. Send a message to the state that we here in Crawford County like our American rights, and they shall not be infringed.
In the interest of time, I'll make it short and sweet. Common sense, okay? Common sense.
Can you please state your name and address?
Governor Pinnian, 111 West Charleston, Ucires, Ohio, 44820. And for the record, the red flag amendment has been taken off of...
Yeah, I stated that right up front.
Well, thank you.
You're welcome. I'm dead engine.
Excuse me?
You're in. I'm in common sense.
So... Okay, there you go. Common sense. That's my Amy words to you. Thanks.
Kathy Fuller, 1107 South Sundance Avenue. I'm getting all nervous and everything. Everybody's talking about how bad guns are, and I'm thinking, "I love guns. I love guns. I grew up... My dad hunted. My dad's rifles, they're a work of art to me. I mean, in the wrong hands, yeah, but as far as owning a gun, they're ultra-art. If you ever went to Cabela's and went to the gun area and walked through the cases and see the craftsmanship involved, and buy one with people to buy a few or own a few, and also, like Amy said, for self-defense, I'm all for that. But I love guns. I mean, walnut and oak and...
Does anybody else want to address Council? Okay, we're gonna move on to communication and petitions.
I mean, what communication? This is from the City Planning Commission, addressed to the City Council President regarding items approved by the Planning Commission for City Council's review, dated February 3. Mr. President, the Ucires City Planning Commission notes Monday, February 3, 2020, it is requested that the following items approved by the Planning Commission be submitted to the City Council committees for review. Proposed zoning reclassification of properties from residential state RE to general business EB. Properties proposed for zoning reclassification include 1725 Hoppley Avenue, parcel ID 4413 800,000, 4400 1379 6,000, 4400 1379 7,000, 4400 1379 9,000, 4400 1379 8,000. The reclassification will be presented with an option to include adjacent properties located at 1675 Hoppley Avenue, parcel ID 446506 4,000, 446506 5,000, 446506 6,000, and 1955 Hoppley Avenue, parcel ID 446504,000, see a notice if you have any attachment as to the resoning proposal. Thank you, Mayor Jeff Reeser, Chairman of the Planning Commission. That does have to be referred to the planning committee.
Any motion to refer this to the planning committee?
Sure.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Moving on to standing committee reports. Starting with the Service Committee, Mr. Trupka, is there any report that you'd like to have the Council on regarding your committee?
No.
Mr. McKeever, the Finance Committee?
No.
Platten?
No.
Economic Development Committee, Mr. Pope?
Yes, sir.
We need a full Council vote on the various subcommittee appointments. Is there a motion by anybody to have a vote on that?
The vote.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Public lands and buildings, Mr. Oakes?
The A3 parking station parking space was brought up, and the motion was passed by a voice vote. We suggested that amended amendments to allow for designation of additional parking spaces in a new speed parking lot for the same purpose in the future of the electric car trucking stations. That was... That was in the public lands and buildings review. What happened?
Okay. The Ad hoc committee on the Council Rules, Mr....
Aye.
Just to remind all the...
and the motion was passed by a voice vote. We suggested that amendment is to allow for designation of additional parking spaces in a new speed parking lot for the same purpose in the future of the electric car charging stations. That was, that was in the public lands and buildings committee.
Okay, the ad hoc committee on council rules, Mr.-
Aye.
Just to remind all the members of that committee that we'll address that first today. That was all of this discussed at the last meeting. And also the health and safety committee, Mr. Horns.
Kind of the various firearms ordinances that we went through that you were involved in. Working from our office, you should be behind the U.S. law.
Mr. Mayor, if you have a traffic commissioner report?
No, no report.
Okay, I need a motion to accept the committee minutes and related committee reports. What committee? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. reported to city officers, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Justin Fernand and I, Chamber Director, met with Patrick McCauley from Treasurer Roberts Craig's office, and had a nice meeting with him, and presented some programs that Treasury's offices are offering. I put copies at your desk, and we'll be able to post them on our webpage. I just want to draw your attention, they're very briefly. First one is ohiocheckbook.com, where anyone can get on that website and type in City of Bucyrus, and you'll see where money is spent, where the tax dollars go. Proud to say we were one of the very first cities. In fact, I was at the opening announcement by Treasurer Mandell's office, signing up for this, part of our transparency initiative. It's a very good website, and don't forget to take advantage of it. The Treasurer's Office has a really good thing, I think, it's what's called a stable account. If you are disabled, you could save without losing, without losing your benefits. So there's a program, kind of similar to Five Twenty Nine Plan. You create an account and fund it, and they do not affect the needs-based financial aid. So we're going to put that out on the city website. It's a very, it's a great idea. There's a bunch of programs that the Treasurer's Office, small business owners can receive up to a three percent interest rate reduction on new or existing loans up to four hundred thousand dollars for two years. That's a really good thing to have, if you're trying to expand or if you're in a new business, you can get at least two years' benefit there. There's also something called Re-Energize Ohio. Small businesses looking to expand or renovate their existing buildings, they qualify for a loans of four-year interest rate reduction. And it's got to be energy-saving products and systems. And they can be done through local banks here. What happens is the state will make the banks whole on the interest rate if the banks are participating in that. I can't remember, Madam Auditor, what the name of this is. Something linked with, with our banks sign up with the state church. Yeah, it's the Cape. I'm sorry, put you on the spot. There's also something called Aglin for those that are nagging business. They've got a really nice deal on that, a three percent interest reduction. And here's something I thought was very, almost everyone could use it. If you, if you own a home and you want to do home improvements, there's a three percent interest rate reduction on loans up to fifty thousand dollars. You get anything, roofing, windows, solar power, just maybe you want to put on a new bathroom. You can, and those, we'll have those. And there's also, you can see that on ohio treasurer dot gov, too, those things, too. You've got those, and we're going to put them on their website, too. And then finally, I already went over this with the auditor. There's, we can invest our excess fund with the state at a pretty favorable rate. So there's, we run those types of things, too. Secondly, speaking of Jesse, we had an open house at the Chamber of Commerce last week. I think she's going to do really well. I like her a lot, and she's been here a long time. A lot of enthusiasm for the city, and a pleasure to support it. Chief Keppke and I had lunch with a group of fifth grade students at the elementary school. If you haven't heard, it's one of the best secrets in town's mentoring program. I know Chief Keppke's involved in it. Kelly Patterson, her business assistant, she's been doing it for several years. And we had a really nice lunch. We had Vander Reich, chief, myself was there, a couple others, and we, and the kids really enjoyed it. If you're interested in mentoring, let us, we'll get you some information on that, so. And this isn't a very huge time limit, so. So I think that's all there is tonight, Mr. Fernand. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And is there a safety service director report?
There is a report from Jeff.
Yeah.
We want to refer the parking lot next to Baker's. I don't remember the number.
Thank you, is it? Your guess is as good as ours.
One through six. So the parking lot next to Baker's is the finance committee, so we can refer that into the new approval corporation. The sewer separation is getting, is continuing. We're going to have a public meeting on Wednesday, February twelfth, that's for group one. Those letters have been mailed out already. And that's for Cullen, Cullen Corr, Robin Hood, Southern Sherwood, Westland Hoppley. Three A separation begins after that. That meeting is set for February twenty-sixth at six P.M., right here in council chambers. And those letters have not gone out yet, but will be going out next week. That's going to be the Washington Hoppley, John Ross, Southern Westland. That's part of our EPA storm separation project that's continuing. The Arrowhead Drive project is, a meeting is set for Wednesday, March eleventh, at six P.M. in council chambers. Residents will be notified of that meeting. That's going to be with a street replacement on Arrowhead Drive. Material bids, we will be ready to discuss the 2020 material bids at committee this Thursday. We mailed out Stetzer Road letters about expanding water to that area. Somebody mentioned water earlier. It's one of our intentions is to expand with our, you know, state-of-the-art water plant outside the city limits. We've had about half of the residents respond, getting pretty positive results, so even our fingers crossed. So we're, we're going to wait, probably till about the end of the month, maybe sign out one additional letter. But we've had quite a few positive responses so far. We're getting close. We're not there yet. The year-end reports will be, and by hand this month, for the departments as usual. Residents, you know, we have people come in town regularly to solicit different billing for gas and the electric. And just be aware that you can check them out on the Better Business Bureau website. We had one this week that had very portraing ratings. Maybe very, very good at sales and at pressure, but, you know. Better Business Bureau website, you see what kind of ratings these folks have before you sign on the ballot. If you're not sure, call up to city office, and we'll tell you what our rates are, too, so. We're in negotiation, natural gas prices continue to plummet, so we're in continued negotiation to get a lower rate than what we have right now, so. And I would like to add one referral, and that would be the Johnny Appleseed project for bicentennial apple on Findlay Hill. I'd like to refer that to, which would I refer it to?
Yeah, my note says Platte. It is technically on our land, but we're also going to take ownership. For safety sake, I think we should refer to Platte, the publicly owned building, because it is going to become, parks going to become a city asset.
And then that's it on Jeff's report.
Mr. President, may I ask the mayor a question?
Yeah, I was going to ask if any council members have any questions.
When you sent out letters to the residents on Stetzer Road, were you expecting, like, letters back from them? Is it like a call?
Yeah, calls, yeah. We did both. We put a slip in, signed it, and the council members.
Okay. So they wanted to call you and tell you they were answered?
Yeah, and we'll follow up with everyone one more time. But our intention is to, let's say, we said we need fifty, around fifty people to make it financially.
On Stetzer Road to five ninety-eight?
No, we went to Pass Stephanie Drive, yeah. I think we sent a hundred and twenty out altogether. A hundred and twenty out, and we thought we needed-
So you want like at least half?
Well, maybe not quite half. It's a large project, it's several hundred, it's going to be over half a million dollars to take it out there, so. So what we'll do is, our next letter will say, you know, we've got this many, whether it's thirty or forty, we need fifteen more, whatever we need, before we can get a better amount of that.
Okay, thank you.
I've got a question for the service director, but since he's not here, maybe he's going to answer it.
I'm trying to.
The traffic light on Crossroads Boulevard, the loop lines were cut when they paved Route Four.
Okay.
I noticed it's still on a timer, and it's turned red when there's nobody at industrial parks.
I wasn't aware of that.
Been that way since-
I thought that was fixed, I'm sorry.
Maybe I'm wrong, maybe it's been fixed. Somebody contacted me a couple days ago about that.
I have contacted him, too, because somebody had contacted me, and I contacted Jeff.
I'll check in. We'll let everyone know.
Okay, um, yes.
I just, I've been meaning to ask you this. What are they doing where they're digging around all of our holes? It's some company that's doing that.
They're treating the poles for rotting. They're injecting some kind of, some kind of liquid in it.
Yeah, that's not the city, that's-
No, I know, it's, it's some out of town group, but I, they don't, they don't give any notice that they're, they don't have to give any notice that they're going to do that?
It's just standard maintenance.
Okay.
Any plan to treat the ones you poured concrete around up on Plymouth?
Just email the administration, and we'll track it back with you. Has anybody else had a question? Are you able to provide the name of that gas handler, so, sir? Um, I can't remember right now. Moving on to the auditor's report. Oh, Bruce.
Sorry, can we back up and pick up the parking lot at Stetzer Road? Pick up your Johnny Appleseed?
Yeah.
And we'll do that.
Oh. Is there a motion for that?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. And get referred. And then moving on to the auditor's report.
Thank you, Mr. President. You have my statement of deposition for January third. Also, the tax revenues as compared to last year for January, and you have revenue tallies to budget. And you'll notice, of course, it's January, so it takes a little bit for the monies to come in from property taxes and that kind of thing, so. We'll be keeping an eye on that and watching our budget as we go through the year. And I do have one referral to the finance committee. I would like to refer the annual enterprise fund reimbursements for the 2019 expenses.
Okay, I need a motion for that.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Finance committee. Anybody else have any questions for the auditor's report? The treasurer is not here, the clean chief's not here, the fire chief's not here. I need a motion to accept all the city's officers' reports. So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Moving on to visitors' input regarding any of the standing for special committees that we just went over, does anybody want to have public input on that? Does anybody need recess? Consideration of proposed legislation for the first time.
We've got five pieces of legislation, five number ordinances to our resolutions. Ordinance number three, 2020, amending and supplementing section eleven fifty seven point zero two entitled official, zoning district map under chapter eleven fifty seven entitled zoning districts and zoning district map under title nine, entitled zoning districts under part eleven entitled pending zoning code of the codified ordinances of the city of Bucyrus by the redesignation of the properties located at eighteen fifteen East Mansfield Street and eighteen twenty five East Mansfield Street for parcel numbers forty three hundred thirteen twenty eight three thousand one and forty three hundred thirteen twenty eight three thousand from general business, the general business district, into LIC, the limited commercial industrial district. That's referred back to the planning committee. Ordinance number four, 2020, amending and supplementing section three five one point fourteen of the codified ordinances of the city of Bucyrus, Ohio by designating an electric vehicle park charging-only parking space and including a two-hour parking limit. That's referred to the public lands and buildings committee. Ordinance number five, 2020, amending and supplementing sections three seven five point zero three, five zero five point zero eight, five zero nine point zero seven, five forty nine point zero one, and nine nineteen point zero five of the codified ordinances of the city of Bucyrus, Ohio to reflect changes required by Ohio Revise Code, section nine point six eight, as amended and effective as of December twenty eighth, 2019, and declaring an emergency. That's referred to the health and safety committee. Ordinance number six, 2020, repeating and replacing ordinance number nineteen, 2019, the table of human resource staffing organization for the city of Bucyrus, Ohio, active through December thirty-one, 2020, and declaring an emergency. That's referred to the finance committee. Ordinance number seven, 2020, amending and supplementing ordinance number sixty-five, 2019, being the annual appropriations ordinance for 2020 by appropriating from unappropriated general funds the sum of one thousand one hundred and thirty dollars and ninety-six cents to the contractual services line item within the fire department category within the program one security subparagraph. And finally, appropriating from unappropriated waterworks replacement funds the sum of nineteen thousand dollars to the capital outlay line item within the waterworks distribution category within the waterworks replacement subparagraph, and declaring an emergency. That's referred back to the finance committee. Resolution number two zero four, 2020, authorizing and directing the Bucyrus City Auditor in behalf of the city of Bucyrus, Ohio to issue rewards or warrants as the case may be drawn upon the appropriate appropriation or appropriations to retroactively pay buckeye excavating for services rendered not to exceed three hundred and thirty thousand five hundred and eleven dollars and seventy-eight cents and minus trash removal for services rendered not to exceed eight thousand one hundred and sixty dollars without the customer purchase order dated prior to the billing date and declaring an emergency. That's referred back to the finance committee. And finally, resolution number two zero five, 2020, authorizing and directing the Bucyrus Public Service Safety Director on behalf of the city of Bucyrus, Ohio to advertise for bids and to enter into a contractor contracts not to exceed two hundred and five thousand dollars with the lowest investment bidder or bidders for the installation of a UV system at the waste water treatment plant. And finally, authorizing and directing the Bucyrus City Auditor to draw rewards or warrants in payment therefore from the appropriate appropriation or appropriations. That's referred to the service committee.
Need a motion to accept these in the first reading?
So move.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Those get referred back to the original meeting committee. Is there any public participation regarding any of the legislation? The general public may prevent their inputs or comment on the legislation we just read for the first time.
I just had a question. I'm not against it about the electric car park. I was here the last meeting, and I heard that we had a grant for it.
Yeah.
Does that include maintenance for it?
Yes, it does. The electric companies paying for it, who is it? AP, AP's going to handle everything, do all the billing for it. Basically, people come, and they swipe their credit card, charge their car, and yeah, all the way up, keep everything on them.
How long is the contract for them to maintain it?
I, the Crawford partnership, I think, is retaining ownership of this charging station, right? We're just allowing it on city property.
Does the city get any kind of monetary benefit?
There's a possibility, if it makes some revenue, that they would return some of it and share it back with us.
No, yeah, you can.
Yeah, but it's a ninety-seven thousand dollar project that they're going to press for free, and it's going to bring people into the town, so.
Out of town people. Because it'll show up on a chart, there's actually apps out there for these people with electric cars and that.
No, I understand, I'm not, I'm not an uneducated elder, I've been doing, we'll reiterate that one more time. I know how it works. I'm just asking what the monetary value for the city is.
You can't necessarily put just a dollar figure on that. The monetary value can be the people coming in that bring their dollars in.
I understand, yes, sir, thank you for the clarification.
I'm trying to insult you.
Well, there's nothing like going around, so.
Where's it going to be? Is it going to be like, do you have any cast electric car? No, it'll actually be right- No, it'll actually be right by the entrance into Picking Park. There's a walkway into there right off the parking lot right there. Next to that, which is right by the pole, which makes it the easiest, easiest way for them to come in. Very cool.
So is that gonna be the one?
Yes, for now. Hoping that it may grow.
Okay, this, that legislation's not getting passed as an emergency tonight, so this is just gonna be the first reading for it, so. It's gonna be a couple more meetings for that to be passed. Yeah.
But the water treatment plant, does that mean our water bill's gonna go up again?
The water treatment plant?
Is that gonna be whatever you said for the-
UV system.
Now, one it is, it's a sewage treatment plant. When we treat the sewage, it has to go through a UV system. That way it kills all the bacteria and the germs and everything. And it goes back, and no, and we actually already have the money in the fund for the sewage treatment plant, so, no. There will be no increases. It's, it's replacing the system that's over twenty years old.
The water bill, I just received, so there would be no rate increases at all in two thousand.
As far as I know, if an auditor can attest to this, is this money's already in these accounts and it's just basically in there for maintenance and we're just now, we're just gonna do it. Is that right?
Right, but he added something different. He was talking about water.
Yeah, we, we made that announcement. There will be no water rate increases in twenty twenty. But this is wastewater. That's the difference, so.
Okay. Uh, committee reports on the pending legislation. Plating Committee?
Plating Committee is favorable to ordinance three dash twenty twenty. The rezoning of eighteen fifteen and eighteen twenty-five East Mansfield Street. Finance is favorable to ordinance six dash twenty twenty for the bill. Finance is favorable to ordinance seven dash twenty twenty for appropriations. And finance is favorable to resolution two oh four dash twenty twenty, bill payment without purchase order.
Uh, Public Lands and Buildings?
Uh, Public Lands and Buildings Committee is favorable to ordinance number four dash twenty twenty, amending and supplementing section three fifty-one point one four. What's that? I don't realize.
Just charging station parking.
Charging station parking lot.
Health and Safety?
Health and Safety is favorable to ordinance five, twenty twenty, the various firearms ordinances.
And the Service Committee?
The Service Committee is favorable to resolution two oh five dash twenty nine. And that's spending up to two hundred and five thousand dollars on a new UV system for the sewage treatment plant.
I need a motion to accept those reports.
So move, second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Mr. Brown, if I could, on, uh, ordinance six, twenty twenty on the bill. Uh, we would request that would be passed as an emergency.
Yeah, we're-
Just so we get people hired, so everybody understands that it's a civil service that continues two or three months and-
Yeah, I, I was contacted by the Safety Service Director at the bill change. The reason that's being requested as an emergency passage is because they need to get some employees hired. And if it goes through the full, uh, process of three readings, um, they wouldn't be able to do those hirings until June. And they actually need those parks employees for, um, towards the end of April, early May, so that's why that's getting passed as an emergency. Unless anybody has a reason why they want, or unless anybody wants to make a motion, we're just going to the Mansfield rezoning. We're gonna accept this as the first reading. Just because that, that really doesn't need to be emergency. And then, uh, the charging station, unless anybody wants to make a motion, we're gonna accept that as the first reading.
Mr. President, if I could ask, uh, economic development, is, do, does that give them a time if they're not gonna lose their grant money?
I'm thinking that we actually do need to, because I'm pretty sure if you read that, uh-
It was December, it was December twenty-seventh originally.
Yeah.
That's when they needed the, the okay.
Yeah.
I would think that one. Yeah, I was hoping to talk to him.
Okay.
I, I spoke to Erin Sinek partnership regarding whether she needed this as an emergency or, or regular, and I explained to her that it was regular, how long it would take. We did pass legislation at the end of nineteen, twenty eighteen to, uh, to forward the grant. And they had that grant, that was done as an emergency down, that has been finished. As far as the parking space is concerned, I told her that if they did this as a regular with the spend, without the second, third, and probably the end of March, which we, that was fine.
Okay.
He's blowing his head in the project.
Okay, we'll just let that go through the records then, and then the, we do need to pass the ordinance number five, two thousand twenty, as emergency. For the second and third reading of five dash twenty twenty. Do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the reading of the caption and text, and declare an emergency?
So move, second.
Vote.
Yes.
All set?
Yes.
McKeeber?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
Trucca?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Ordinance number five, twenty twenty. Do I hear a motion to adopt ordinance five dash twenty twenty?
So move, second.
McKeeber?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
Trucca?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vote.
Yes.
All set?
Yes.
Ordinance number five dash twenty twenty is duly adopted. And the, the bill for the manpower for, for the second and third reading of ordinance number six dash twenty twenty. Do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the reading of the caption and text, and declare an emergency?
So move, second.
Vote.
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
Trucca?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
All set?
Yes.
McKeeber?
Yes.
Ordinance number six, twenty twenty. Do I hear a motion to adopt ordinance six dash twenty twenty?
So move, second.
McKeeber?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
Trucca?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vote.
Yes.
All set?
Yes.
Ordinance number six dash twenty twenty is duly adopted. The appro, the financial appropriations ordinance, uh, for second and third reading of ordinance number seven dash twenty twenty. Do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the reading of the caption and text, and declare an emergency?
So move, second.
McKeeber?
Yes.
Vote.
Yes.
All set?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
Trucca?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Ordinance number seven, twenty twenty. Do I hear a motion to adopt ordinance number seven dash twenty twenty?
So move, second.
All set?
Yes.
Vote.
Yes.
McKeeber?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
Trucca?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Ordinance number seven dash twenty twenty is duly adopted. Um, paying the bill without a purchase order. For the second and third reading of resolution number two zero four dash twenty twenty. Do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the reading of the caption and text, and declare an emergency?
So move, second.
McKeeber?
Yes.
Vote.
Yes.
All set?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
Trucca?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Ordinance number, I'm sorry, resolution number two zero four, twenty twenty. Do I, do I hear a motion to adopt resolution number two zero four dash twenty twenty?
So move, second.
Vote.
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
Trucca?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
All set?
Yes.
McKeeber?
Yes.
Resolution number two zero four dash twenty twenty is duly adopted. Okay, and then we've already approved the, uh, or accepted the first reading for the UV system bid. Unless anybody wants to do otherwise, we're just gonna accept that as the first reading.
I just got a question.
Yeah.
How, what, what's, what's the state of the law on the majority? Yeah, that's the, that's the next problem.
Needs to be replaced, that's why we're replacing it.
That's what I mean.
I don't know. I know, uh, Tim Wood was here. Uh, he told the age of it, I don't remember.
We're okay to hang it out there for another two months.
We're gonna, we're gonna need it, you know?
Right, no, I don't want anything added to it.
Why are we holding it up? Let's just, let's just get it, let's get it approved, and then if we can hold off two months, we still have the money to prove, so.
Mr. President?
Mm-hmm.
I spoke to Mr. Michael about that, and I asked him if he needed this as an emergency, the suspension of the second and third readings, or if it was okay to do as a regular without suspending the readings, and he said it was fine to be allowed.
Okay. Okay, moving on.
Literally.
Yeah, unfinished business. Has anybody got any unfinished business?
I would like to make a motion that some, one of the, I don't know if it's health and safety or what, would, I'd like to look for the, to a resolution to that committee to be discussed.
Give me a second and make the motion.
I, um...
There's been a motion made to refer, um, what, what was your exact motion?
I'd like to move that it be referred to a committee to discuss it, whether it's put on the ballot or how are they decided, so that it's not sent out here every minute they come into.
Referring to the Second Amendment?
Yes.
Okay, there's been a motion to refer that to committee, is there a second?
I'll second that.
There's been a motion made by Ms. Allseth, and a second made by Mr. McKeeber to refer to committee. The Second Amendment sanctuary possibly putting it on the ballot or doing something else with it.
I don't know what committee to specify it to.
I'm being told by the auditor that it should go to the Health and Safety Committee.
Okay.
So, um, all those in favor of referring that to the Health and Safety Committee, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, that's going to go into the Health and Safety Committee on this Thursday. And then also, did we, we've already talked about this.
Yeah, you can just read that.
Okay. There's a meeting on the Group One sewer separation. It's a public meeting in the council chambers at six P.M. Wednesday, February twelfth. I'm assuming letters have been sent out to all the residents. Also, President's Day, Monday, February seventeenth, city offices are open. Um, the Chamber of Commerce is having an industry forecast practice Thursday, February twenty-seventh at the Trillium Event Center. Seven A.M., it's twenty dollars to get in. They have phone number of four one nine five six two three three two one. And then Friday, February twenty-eighth, uh, Group Three sewer separation, public meeting. Council chambers, six P.M. Wednesday, March eleventh, Arrowhead Run, public meeting, council chamber, six P.M. Is that due to the resurfacing of the river? Mr. Trucca?
I, I'd just like to go ahead, and I know it was just an oversight, but, uh, I know there was people that did offend the ribbon cutting recently and are, we're welcoming a, a change of business ownership. From a person that's been in business for many, many years, Brandi's, and now it's changed the ownership to Kay Piper, so.
I'm sorry, I forgot to mention that.
Oh, Mr. Merrick, can you give us an update on, uh, we had a pushback on the opening of the Burger King?
Yeah, um, we're waiting on, we're supposed to be opening, ready to cut in tomorrow, but there was a, uh, an issue with inspection. And they're, they're waiting for one eye inspected and approved. If it got inspected and, uh, then there was a, it's also on firefighters, well, but, uh, they're gonna do the fire inspection, the plumbing inspection, and then drive by tomorrow morning at ten o'clock. And if they're open. Uh, if not, they, they're gonna open as soon as they got the inspection and then-
They're not gonna wait for the ribbon cutting then?
They're, they're gonna have ribbon cutting next week probably.
Okay.
They love a ribbon cutting, but they'll do it-
But they may be open tomorrow, because I've had people asking, okay.
Um, we don't smell like burgers, should I pull it?
I actually stopped at the Burger King and Galleon today, carried a Burger King pop into the Pelican, and somebody said, are they open? And I was like, no, I'm coming from Galleon.
We don't need to excuse any council members, you know, Radisson. Joint Regular Committee meetings, all referrals from this council meeting, and any open project are going to be at the coming Thursday meeting at six, six o'clock this Thursday.
Yeah, we have, um, five new referrals. We have the enterprise fund reimbursements from the auditor of finance. We have the, uh, easement on Finley Hill, uh, and the law director through Platy, or mayor, law administration from, uh, to Platy and Public Plans. We have the rezoning for, uh, Topley Avenue from, uh, the Plating Commission to Platy. We have the, uh, parking lot on North Sand, the city parking lot on North Sandusky Street from the mayor to finance. We have the Second Amendment sanctuary city proposal from council to safety, already in committee. And on the agenda for Thursday, we have the material bids, which we do every year about this time, to service and finance, and we have the, uh, ad hoc committee, the council votes of procedure. And anything else that you wanna add, let me know by the morning tomorrow, and, uh, that's going to be that.
Need a motion to adjourn?
So move, second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Meeting is adjourned at eight, twenty-six, ten o'clock.